Are you going to be able to call?
Yeah, Brian.
Sure, I can. So this is trustee special public.
Okay.
All this special public hearing of the Olmsted Township, ordered trustees to order at 7:03 PM. Will the administrator please call them all?
Sure.
Trustee Alton here. Trustee Zivir.
Yes.
Trustee Cole.
Present.
Law Director Jim Matthews here.
Great. Please stand for the bench. By my allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The purpose of this public hearing is to have a discussion on two zoning applications. We appreciate everybody taking time to be with us this evening in your interest in township government. The first application I'll read, application number 24 OLMT-ZC002, submitted by Redwood representative Patricia Rokey. On behalf of the property owner, the Home City Ice Company, request the rezoning of parcel number 264-16-004 from its current zoning classification of L1 light industrial to RMFA multi-family residential. Redwood proposes to develop the property into a community consisting of 93 distinctive single-story apartment homes, each featuring two bedrooms, two baths, and its own two-car attached garage. That is, the first application will take the two separately. And I think we have folks from Redwood here to present. And I have Pat at Redwood Levitt. If you could, if you could stand, maybe take the podium.
I don't know if she can.
Is that all right?
I don't know if she can, whether, with her voice.
Oh, whatever's most, yeah, whatever's most comfortable for you.
No, I'm fine. I just didn't know if you wanted my back to you.
If you get some mics turned on, yeah, went on boom, it is or not.
Patricia Mercosi, 7007 East Hudson Valley Boulevard in Evans, Ohio. And thank you for accommodating me. It's a little hard to get around right now. So as you know, we went to zoning commission meeting twice. And we're here tonight to speak with the trustees regarding our rezoning application. We did give you some, like, a couple of Brooklyn that we just highlighted what we want to discuss tonight. Again, it's 16.7 acres, corner of Bagley, Bronson Road. And right now, as you know, we're directly adjacent to our Redwood North Ridgeville property. Single family homes are to the east, Norfolk Center to the north, and again, single family rezoning to the south. But if applied to the comprehensive plan, general recommendation for the market, the township are on the on the road grant to residents and businesses, may improve the appearance of residential areas, and continue to ensure building codes are being followed by residents and businesses, then the township is properly enforcing these codes. Also, by having our type of apartment homes, we can have age of place, which I think is one of the items in your comprehensive plan. In addition, in your comprehensive plan, it's stated that you have approximately 16,000 dwelling units in your township. And out of the 16, 6,000, 6,000, 20%, or as of a few years ago when your comp plan was done, was 1,200 were multifamily. So in 20%, we're looking about currently, we have about 1,200 multifamily apartment homes. And we're asking to have a rezon, to have an additional 93 units. We get a tax analysis from Ryan LOC. And that's on one of your pages for tax analysis. And it shows over the course of the next few years, the amount of taxes that Redwood would be spending. It also has a breakdown of the, by county school, township, library, in the total of where all the dollars go as a percentage of the taxes that will be paid. This was brought up in the planning or zoning commission meeting. We wanted to address that. The next page is a concept plan showing our 93 units. I'm in pillar coded to show the type of units we'll be building here. Some have a center room on, some have, well, one is, is our, one of our larger units. And that's predominantly what we'll be building here. Runways before that is North Ridgeville. We don't have any of this type of model, nor do we have it on our project in your town of Baco Road. So we want to give something a little bit different. Next page is talking about the long-term maintenance for Redwood. And you can see this is Olmsted Township that was built in 2006. As you can see on these pictures, we no longer do the one-car garages. We're all two-car garage now. We've evolved over the years with that. You can see here with one apartment association key award for Golden More, for overall community appeal. You can see that. We take a lot of pride in our, in our neighborhoods. We, what we'll do is, okay, this one is what's built 2006, number of years ago. And of course, we evolve, getting our new elevations on the inside. We do a different upgrades. So as, as these older units turn, we'll go on and we'll take capital and upgrade those units. So that we have the, you know, the slate flooring, hardwood lines, install appliances, that type of thing. And the rents currently are 1434 and up to 2206, 99% leased. And then North Ridgeville property that would be directly adjacent to is 98% leased. So we tell there's a real need in the township for an additional Redwood neighborhood. We're all family story apartment neighborhood homes, two-car attached garage. Paddles are down, just don't shake side and incentive landscaping. Again, here's a few pictures. And then we have six different floor plans. We have two pictures that show that, what the interiors look like on the last two pages. Then what I'd like to do is just address the main comments that came from the zoning commission meetings. And again, in your comprehensive plan, one of your items is that high-quality developments, residential and commercial. Now, we feel Redwood, our Redwood neighborhoods are definitely high-quality developments and very well maintained. And again, the diversity allows for age of place. One of the items that came up were wetlands. There's wetlands on this property. And we would have to mitigate those wetlands. They're all category ones. There's like, out of eight, six areas, some are very small, ones are a little larger. And if there's four category ones, which are very minimal, and there's, I think, two category twos. We are allowed to mitigate those. And what happens is, not to get too easy, is for every acre that we mitigate, we have to, we have to have two acres filled for that. So for every one acre we fill, where the mitigation's done, there's two acres. If they're forested wetlands, then it's two to two and a half. So would we be filling many of these wetlands? Yes. But we're also going to be creating a lot more wetlands. The traffic came up again, which typically does. And when we go through site plan approval, we went to a traffic generation report. And that is done based on ODOT standards. And typically, because of our residents living, whether seniors, intinesters, and professionals, our peak time of like 7:30 to 9:00 and 4:30 to 6:00 are not typical. We're more mid-morning and early afternoon. Because the residents haven't lived there. But we will do a traffic generation report. And if that shows that we have to do a full traffic study, then of course, we would do that. Light industrial allows for numerous issues, research and testing labs, a bed office, car-on-truck sales, adult entertainment, distribution facilities, and warehouses, and a few other ones. But those type of uses on this property, in many cases, would create more traffic and at different times of the day, depending on what the use ended up being. And the last again, I just wanted to bring up, we already talked about the property tax of one. But that seemed to be something that came up quite a bit. We just wanted to let you know that we had a, you know, professional analysis done on it. And those would be the taxes that we would be spending with our Redwood neighborhood. Will share from Redwood's here with me, Travis Crane from Canadian Resource Group. He's our engineer. So hopefully, you'd like him to help us.
Thank you. I think the primary purpose of this hearing is going to be for the board to listen. But I do want to ask just a few, you know, really quick questions here. First of all, this presentation that you brought before the board, can you make sure that a copy of that gets to the administrator so that he can include that formally in the minutes so that folks in the public can, can review that as well?
He has a copy.
I did. You have a?
Well, we'll do that too.
I can email it to you.
That's, yep.
That'd be perfect.
That way the formatting's all intact. And then, I mean, I know you mentioned the fiscal study, the tax analysis here. And it shows about $85,000 potentially going towards the township. You know, it's a very hypothetical kind of preliminary question. But if the township were to explore like a joint economic development district with a neighboring community that enabled that to charge an income tax of, let's say, 2% on these new residents to help make sure that they're paying more of their fair share into our police-fire infrastructure, et cetera. I think that's something that Redwood might be open to. Those are the questions that I have. I don't know if you guys have any questions? We're going to move on to the public comment portion here. We need to take the two items on here separately. So there's the Redwood one, which we just heard about. There's also the Pride One item off of Bagley Road. So I'm going to go through the list here. And anybody who is, wants to speak to the other zone, potential zoning submission, just let me know and I will set your comment form aside. And we will get to you when we read the next item. Does that generally make sense to folks? I'm not going to impose a time limit for folks, but I will just say that the chair has the discretion after three minutes to limit comments if we're getting, you know, repetitive or anything like that. Want to be respectful of everybody's time tonight. So I'm going to read these names and anybody who wants to speak to the next item, not this one, please say something. So we have Ashley Hughes.
Speak on the next item.
Next item. I have Kathy Clem. Do you want to speak to this one or this one?
Oh, our vocal.
Okay. Let me, I'll get, I'm going to read through the names first. I'll recognize you for both. I have Barb Clem. Do you want to speak to this one or the next one?
This one.
Okay.
They're separated. Yeah.
I'm going to keep this one since she wants to be done. Barb is this one. Chris Agnes Dofus, this one. Both, okay. And then Ronald Paul. This one or the next one? Just this one? Okay. All right. Well, that was relatively easy. Thank you. Mr. Paul, since I called you last, you're welcome to go first if that's all right.
Justin has the mic.
Yeah, he has the mic. So whatever's most comfortable for you.
Yes, my name is Ronald Paul. I live at 2737 Bagley Road. I would like to notify more that I was not notified of the meeting. And I reviewed the Ohio advised code Title V, which is Townships for Zonings. It says Chapter 5, 19, zoning effective was made effective on 10/3/23. Residents must be notified by the township. And the township may require the owner or less seen of the property to pay a fee to defray the cost of advertising, mailing, filing with the county recorder and otherwise. So I was not notified on this job. And I'm diagonally across the street. Other people have been notified. But I don't believe they were officially notified because it wasn't registered mail. And you've got to require the person that's requesting the zoning to do that. I'm also concerned about the master drainage plant, which is going to affect Olmsted Township, that Bagley Road between my sells property and Rice property, which is next door. There's a major ditch that goes back to French Creek. The county of Kaihoga has put in a retention area. And they have built a structure to handle the drainage. And according to their records, they have no responsibility for the, the ditch that goes back to the French Creek. And the township doesn't claim any responsibility to go back to clean the ditch. That's an issue as far as I'm concerned because when the, I purchased this house two years ago. And the friend who sold it told me that the township required him to put in a storm sort outlet to that ditch to, to make sure that the next door neighbor's property could drain property to the east of it. And I would think that the township would not have that responsibility if it was a privately owned ditch, which pretty much they say it is. I'm also concerned about the environmental impacts on the property. I'm concerned that I was informed that it was used as a shooting range in the past. And so there's possibly large amounts of lead in that area. I'm concerned about the wetlands. If there's a master plant for the wetlands, where's the retention base that going to go? Where are they going to run the drainage? And also the capacity of sanitary sewer. Are they planning to use the sanitary at Bagley? And if the iron doesn't treat that plant, have the capacity to hold the 93 progress? That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. I've, as I said initially, intending to have a public hearing where the board hears comments and listens. We don't want to get into any sort of back and forth with individuals. We're up here purely to listen. However, I do think that the legal concern that you raised regarding public notice is worth being addressed by either law director or the administrator, or both, why?
At this stage, there is no direct notice to residents? It's only a, a single advertisement? Is that what was done?
Well, no, for this one, I think Mr. Paul did call the township office several days ago. We did notify residents. We did not send out certified. That's not required. We sent out regular mail. We also publicly advertised.
I'm sorry? Yeah, do you have the mic by chains?
Can I, do I get the mic? I'm sorry. Yeah, so Mr. Paul did call into the township office a couple of days ago, inquiring why he did not get noticed. He is just outside the limits. So it's, it's any continuous property or directly across the street. We did tell him that over the phone. And in addition, we did legal, we did illegal advertising and then we sent out notices. So those people were notified. Everything is posted on the website as well. So you could click and have notified me if you want to keep up on this project and be aware of what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Kathy Clem off of Jennings Road.
Yeah, I'm on Jennings. My biggest concern with the township, why do we go backwards? It's already zoned in those, why do we go backwards to know the natural? And so need to stay light in those drill. We need to get light in those drill and they're, we need the gas. That's my concern.
Okay, I appreciate your comments and they're noted by the board. Next up, we have Chris Agnes Dofus.
Yeah, there's a couple concerned with that property there. Well, the big one is infrastructure. You're going to see, like, I mean, the, the traffic questions were addressed, obviously. But can our roads handle it? You're going to build this development next to railroad tracks? You don't think you're going to start complaining about the trains that can buy it all hours of the day? Not to mention the home, home city ice trucks going up and down the driveways. Stormwater. You're going to take a, a large chunk of land that's absorbing rainwater right now. You're going to catch that rainwater. You're going to divert it somewhere. Where's it going to go? I mean, our infrastructure, we know it's not capable of handling anymore stormwater or sewage. We're still having issues with that all around the township. That's never really been completely addressed, addressed or fixed, or, you know, there's been band-aids left on, on the whole. That's about it right now. Also, as, as we know with the economy and the markets and so on and so forth, I see every day right now where I'm up and delivering mail in a pretty big city. These type of developments that have been built, been built the last six to eight months are sitting empty and vacant. No one's ready. No one's buying. They're sitting there because people can't afford it at this moment. I see it every day. Multiple developments in the city of Westlake, a very prominent city that are not being moved. They're sitting vacant. What happens then? Those are my concerns with this property. The infrastructure, can the roads handle the additional traffic? Can, you know, can our sewers, can our stormwater, you know, and then, you know, there's going to be additional. I mean, if we're talking about age appropriate, you know, if you're looking at 55 and older, you're going to look at more than your best hope. I mean, stuff like that. We can't handle this at this moment. And the schools, I mean, you know, if you're going to have kids, you know, you're going to be putting more kids in the schools that are already strapped. They're not going to build another school because they're having trouble. So we need to keep that in mind. When, when you're looking to advance the township, what is better for the residents right now? Not for who may come in and who may not come in. What's good for us right now? Those of us that aren't here that take care of the township as it is, how does it benefit us? But I don't think it does. That's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Your comments are noted. The last one I have on this one, and I put both of the last two speakers into the pile for the next, next one too, is Barb, Barb Clem.
I'm Barb Clem, 273 Bagley Road. One of my major concerns, and you've answered a lot of my concerns when you gave your presentation about Redwood. You ran on, I think, the form there that states how much tax we're going to get from it. And I want to understand what was presented. We'll get about $85,000 a year in taxes from this property. It costs $12,095 per student to educate a child in this district. I know from seeing the bus pick up kids at the current Redwood Estates, that $85,000 is going to get eaten up plus some just with students. My concern about mentioning the 2% income tax. I wonder if there's a legal problem with that because you can charge those Redwood Estates that. And what about the other Redwood Estates and the other of multifamily apartments? Too, I think you run into a very slippery slope in a community that is really happy. We don't have breather tanks. I think it's kind of an intriguing, but a very dangerous precedent to take. I am concerned that the financial advantage, the $85,000 a year does not outweigh the liability of extra students, extra things, extra fire, extra road maintenance, sunblock, yeah, yeah, I love the journey, my bad. And I think it's not problematic. I was wondering, you mentioned the shooting, one time we mentioned the shooting range. And of course, I hear that often, but I haven't heard it lately. Are the police still shooting on that range? They are, they are.
They are not. And it, no, and it was mitigated probably 10 years ago, I believe. We did a complete, the township did a complete mitigation of that property and took all the lead out. We spent, I don't, at the time, I wasn't on the board.
Okay, not even the land. They're still going to shoot there.
No, no, no.
And last summer, they were, in last winter, they were shooting there.
Not, not our township wasn't. Do the police department, no. I don't know if somebody else was shooting out there.
We want to refrain from getting into a back and forth. I appreciate the patience you have for this.
Make sure it's not a police range at all. If you're going to have any problems there, you can't have that shoot out of there. Right. Okay, and you answered it. It's rental. What about the two little houses on the corner? Of Bronson and Badger. On the other side of Olmsted Ice, what happens to those?
There's three.
There's three?
They, they just got evicted. They just evicted.
Yeah, that it looks, anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. They are noted by the board. I did just, and, and I appreciate the comments. And again, I don't want to get into a back and forth. But I want to make sure I'm not misrepresenting the presentation that was just given by Redwood. I believe the figure for township tax revenue was like $85,000. But I believe that the school district revenue was closer to $300,000 or something along this line. So I just want to make sure that I'm not misrepresenting. And your concerns are still certainly valid. And I think, again, without getting into a back and forth, Jim, if you could explain the legal precedent of a joint economic development district, that might be helpful just for folks?
What, what the board members are exploring is a mechanism to apply an income tax by agreement with a neighboring city. And it would not be applicable throughout the entire township.
It's going to be, can be taxed one percent, a lot of one-way income tax, no, that is more.
Well, that's how a JED would work.
Maybe it would go with the color.
We're not going to get into back and forth. You haven't been recognized by the chair.
It can't be rented.
Not been recognized by the chair, Mr. Spotty.
No, no, no. Excuse me one second. Let me speak my.
Mr. Spotty, you've not been recognized.
These are all the types of things that would be explored and discussed in the board's furtherance of the project is how these JEDs would work, what territories they would apply to. They do allow for differentiation in areas. So some areas of the township would not be subject to the JED. And only the territory subject to the JED would have.
None of it would apply to existing residents.
Correct. That's exactly right.
So, so. All right.
That will be explored much later.
Well, we'll move on to public comment for the next application. So application number 24 OLMT-ZC003, submitted by Granger Property Development LLC, requests approval for a 125-unit build-to-rent community. The proposal includes approximately 4.33 acres of commercial outlots fronting Bagley Road on properties identified by parcel numbers 265-04-018, 265-04-002, and 265-04-014. Do you have a public, can you fill out a public comment form just so we have record in view?
Yeah.
You already have a form. You can do it after that. You guys have the site plan? Do you want to copy? You guys have the segments? Do you want to copy?
I have not.
Wherever you want to stand, whatever's most comfortable. There's fine, podium's fine, whatever you want to do. Can you please state your name for the record? Your bike.
Michael Nairn with Granger Property Development. So we're proposing a 125-unit all-tenant family residential development along with approximately two to three acres of more upfront on Bagley. The units that we build, they're primarily single-story with also some two-story units. All have attached garages. Primarily one, two beds, but we also have one and three-bed units. We also have amenities in our, in our projects such as a clubhouse. Sometimes we do a pool, fitness center. And then in, in regards to the commercial, I've included in a package to you guys kind of what we envisioned of the commercial, which is two buildings. One is a anywhere from three to five-pennant strip, which we see, I put in, in the package. So uses that we, we perceive being interested in the space such as, you know, fast casual restaurants like Chipotle, Yada, Starbucks, you know, ice cream place along with, you know, maybe fitness or hair salon, potentially a bank. And then on the other. And then, on the other part of the commercial, we have a, uh, drive route shown there. So, we're still, you know, we haven't, we haven't marketed the commercial at this point. Um, but, you know, we've gotten feedback from, from the trustees in the past, zoning of what they would like to see, uh, along with what would fit the zoning code. So I feel like we took that into account, um, of the needs and what we could see going here. We, the problem with the property that we struggle, um, with is the amount of wetlands. Um, so, I, I laid it on the site map to you guys and break out the amount that is unbuildable area due to wetlands. Um, I know zoning really wanted us to connect the commercial better to the residential. The problem is, is essentially the site is cut in half due to the wetlands, which, you know, we're, we're trying to preserve and have to preserve. So the site, you know, we feel like the, the use that we have proposed is the best use of the site, given the amount of wetlands trying to preserve that and what areas left to be buildable. Um, another comment from zoning was, you know, wanting more commercial. But the problem is, you know, we understand the traffic concerns on sterns. Um, so we didn't want, wanna put any more commercial on sterns due to the concerns of traffic. And the only reason we have another entrance on sterns is because you need two for fire safety. Uh, but we're really limited with two points of access for the residential, which is a requirement, along with the wetlands of how much commercial we can have. So we felt like we maximized the amount of commercial, uh, that we're able to have and that we feel like is affordable by the site. Um, but those are just some issues that are kind of out of our control that we're dealing with regarding the wetlands. I think that's really all we have, just questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I know that the, um, zoning commission in recommending approval, uh, did also add some conditions. Do you feel that those conditions will be met?
Um, I, I, I feel like, you know, one of them was trying to connect more, which, you know, we're going to do another wetland study, um, you know, after the next trustee meeting. Uh, we have the one that's two years old, which this is based on. Um, so I know we talked about possibly, you know, walking trails and things like that. They're trying to make the, the two sections connect more. Um, so I think that we will be able to do the best we can. Um, and we want to meet those requirements, but it, it really just comes down to the restrictions of the site and what the site will allow us to do. Things outside of our control. So we want, if, if we're able to, we will. But if for some reason the site does not allow us to do the wetlands, then, then, that will be the only issue.
That makes sense. Um, and I'm gonna ask the same question of you than, that I asked of, of the Redwood developers. I think some residents have rightly pointed out that the property tax revenue, um, that, um, the township would realize is not necessarily always sufficient to meet the needs of the growth in terms of infrastructure, in terms of police and fire, et cetera. Um, and especially when you consider the effort underway to try to revitalize and breathe some life into, um, that town center area. Um, should the township, uh, explore, uh, forming a JED with a neighboring community and imposing, uh, two percent income tax on this property, um, in order to make it, uh, make these new residents pay, I guess, uh, a little bit more than existing residents do, uh, for services? Is that something that you think that, um, Pride One would be open to exploring?
Uh, I think we would consider it. Um, however, I mean, to me, I think any resident of the community, whether they're a renter or homeowner, should be treated the same. Um, and I don't think renters should be treated differently than homeowners. Um, so I think we would be open to considering it. However, I don't think it's appropriate to treat whether somebody's a renter or a homeowner differently.
Yeah, I certainly agree that, uh, folks who own property and folks who rent property deserve the same rights. But we're, I think the distinction is more, uh, between the, uh, well, existing development that's already there and, and new development that could potentially go in. But I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I look at it as, as, this right now, the amount of tax revenue produced by this property is minimal, it's just land. So any sort of development, I think, will more than pay for the increase in cost that the township will have in regards to schools and fire and safety. So I think that, even without that, I think this is a, a positive benefit to the, the tax revenue to the township, given it's just vacant land, uh, that's producing no tax revenue right now.
I appreciate the comments. Um, could you also include, if you haven't already, sending PDFs to Gary so that he can get this as part of the minutes? And most of the public can see your presentation as well?
Yeah.
Any, anybody else have any questions for the preside? Okay. We will move on to comments from the public. Um, I will start with folks who have not yet gone. Um, so I believe we have, uh, this Ashley Hughes off Greenback Highway Drive, uh, first. If you want the microphones up there, or if you're, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Hello, I'm Ashley. Um, you know, new homes are always great for a community, it brings in a lot of revenue. Finances are always needed, but at what cost for the rest of the community that's already here? I'm a new homeowner in Old St. Township within the past few years. And I moved here into this community because it was our con toys. My husband and I wanted to get established here and help to start a family here at the great community. There's many positives that we have to say about it. We love our home, we love the deer that come in our backyard, we have a great foundation that we started to build. I moved here from North Elmstead, from a community that is becoming very overpopulated and very negative ways. I moved here to get away from that, to be safe in my community, not having, not having experience with things that are happening over there. I grew up in a home that was robbed. Um, you know, multiple concerns going down my street, a community that used to be safe, until new developments started coming in, multiple new people moving in, and it's not what it used to be there. And I don't wanna see that happen to this community. I wanna continue to be able to be a homeowner in this community, raise a family with my husband, and continue to sit in my backyard and enjoy and feel safe. I don't wanna have to run from this town too. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Um, next up, I have Kathy Clump.
One of my questions is for this development, who's gonna get involved in traffic? Um, are they gonna be making Bagley more risky? Uh, that's gonna be coming down the road next. So you're gonna see it, you sit there in hardship and trying to pull out, it's, it's terrible. And then you figure, you're gonna want the sterns and try to make a left turn to go north, it ain't gonna happen. That's all gonna be thought about. Are you gonna put two traffic lights every five hundred feet? I don't think so. I think we need to, you know, think about what we're putting in there. There again, light industrial, cut the traffic down, people come to work in the morning, they leave at night, five o'clock, we don't.
Thanks for your comments, uh, they're noted by the board. And I agree that traffic is, in my opinion, one of the, uh, one of my most significant concerns about, uh, this request. But we'll see how that is addressed. Next up, we have Chris Agnew-Sopless.
Yeah, just a couple concerns, just with the lab property. Again, you're gonna take a very large chunk of land that's absorbing rainwater, you're gonna capture that rainwater and again divert it. Now, this is gonna be a lot colder in my house, and we still have plenty of issues. Um, and I don't wanna see that go backwards, you know, we've headed in a good direction with that. Um, also, the crime is you would bring in more businesses like that, and so on and so forth. But you're also competing with local businesses, you know, roasted, Angelina's, you know, the, the Mexican restaurant, the cheese thing restaurant, if you bring in like a Chipotle and a Starbucks, what happens to our local business? How are they gonna compete with corporate businesses? And those are our community members, those are people that live in our community, why would we sabotage them? Um, you know, and, and again, the infrastructure, you're gonna, you're gonna need more police, you're gonna need more fire, definitely. Um, service department's gonna have a bigger headache on their hands, especially with the roads. Uh, how does that get paid for? And you're gonna talk about this is getting a, you know, positively a two percent income tax. But I know what some people are thinking, you're gonna have these new people coming in, why do they have to pay when they don't have to pay? And is that gonna divert them and not, and make them not wanna come here? And again, we're gonna have vacant properties just sitting around, you know, no fulfillment, no tax revenue coming in at that point. And bankruptcies happening, and workload during the song, so forth. Um, also, last thing with both of these zoning issues, if, if you went ahead and you, you, you changed the zoning, how does that affect what's going on with the hollow property? And will they be able to use that in their, in their own advantage in the next court hearing or so, so forth, because they were turned down for zoning? Or doesn't that give them an advantage and ammunition to come back in the township? I mean, that's something that needs to be thought about, we need to take care of the township. And, and, you know, we have plenty of homes that are for sale and so forth, people wanna live here, they can, we have plenty of rental properties. There is still vacant buildings and that don't have businesses that it could go into. Let's work on that first before we try to build something new that could cost us more money as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Agnew-Sopless, I've noted your comments. And I, I will say, I've talked with the law director about some more concerns about the hollow property. And I'll say that I feel that these are very different situations. Um, I'll also add that, uh, I think your comments and the comments of other folks I've heard from on this who've reached out about, uh, a desire for seeing unique businesses, uh, at the front of the, uh, this property that are not just, um, like you said, a Starbucks or some sort of fast casual that would compete with, um, existing nearby businesses. I think those comments are, uh, well-taken by the board. And I think that's something that, um, we have continuously expressed, um, to the, uh, potential developer as they seek potential end users. So, um, with that in mind, that is the last public comment form I have, um, for, uh, both of these. And, and if there's anybody else wishing to make a public comment, if you could fill out a form, I will absolutely recognize both of you. Is that okay? And I can, I can do it at the end, if you can fill out the form at the end. But if you can state your first and last name and make sure that you, uh, fill out a form at the end, you're welcome to speak, sir.
I have a question. Um, I live directly across on Bagley Road to Old St. Ice, and Bronson runs right into my driveway. Um, do these two companies, do they have anything to do with each other? Redwood and Pride One?
No.
Do they? Because when I worked with Pride One in two thousand twelve through two thousand sixteen, I was sent to Pride One jobs, I was sent to Redwood jobs by the same people. And I just wondered if, you know, that's all, I just wanna know, you know, it seems like kind of a takeover.
I appreciate the question, again, I don't wanna get into a back and forth, uh, from the perspective of the board. But if any of the, uh, developers presenting present wanna speak to that, they're certainly welcome to. Please.
I'll teach you this, uh, Redwood and Pride One, uh, worked together for twenty years, but as of three years ago, uh, we completely split, five time members was building for Redwood. Uh, but as of three years ago, uh, there was a split. So, but all a coincidence that you guys are right here, same schedule.
Honestly, yes.
Okay. And, uh, so if you could fill out a form before you leave, make sure we have it for the minutes, that'd be great. Uh, same goes for you, sir, please.
I filled mine already.
You're okay?
Uh, person who I would say, the vacant property sitting there making no pass down? My property on Bagley Road. There was nothing there, it's up the houses, a hundred years old, garage gift, thirty years old, a barn that's a hundred years old. They jack my property tax, one hundred thousand more than four hundred dollars. Aren't you complaining, we ain't paying money for a vacant land? Live to the county, I don't want you having any of it. Another thing about you building across the street, where are those kids gonna play? In a street? You know, and they're, they're, they're over there, she beats them. I got sixteen here in my backyard, and I feed them, they don't bother me, they don't eat my garden, they don't eat my flowers. And you're just, where you gonna push all the deer out, they cross the street right in front of my house. I asked the township to put a sign on, it's your choice, oh, it's not our own, it's the county's. The county shouldn't have done it, and they've been, hasn't been last fall. There were a whole bit of couples families laying on, walk us on the other side of the street, I don't care, stay on my side. Other than that, and are you gonna live in there? No. I don't think so. Why does that build, why don't they build it, or like Bob Schmidt, he always build a home when he build a building? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, uh, if you can make sure your public comment form gets up here. Uh, I think that's it, unless anybody else has a public comment form to fill out, we'll move on to the regular meeting. Anybody? One once, twice? All right. Um, I will move to adjourn, uh, this, uh, trustee special public hearing at seven forty-seven, yeah.
Second.
All the way on this, you know, I'm assuming, trustee Zemir?
Trustee Zemir?
Yeah.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Alton?
Yes.
All right, so seven forty-two, meeting, all right, seven forty-seven.
I talked with, uh, the Senator and Board Chairman, John Phillips. I believe that Old St. Paul, this contract, they said in there, with water line, I know they're working on getting it fixed, I don't have.
Nail better, ladies.
I think it was when they were thinking one of the great.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, how is this all possible, but I did get a press call. I'm a team player, but I don't wanna do this anymore. So, I mean, I, I was told that they, the water line where they get it, they got served off.
I will make sure that your comments are passed back to the community.
This is not a turning.